Just calling our meeting to order and I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. My mic's a little loud, might turn that up. We certainly appreciate everyone being here tonight. We're going to ask Brother Ryan Carr to give us the indication here in a minute. We're going to first do the pledge of allegiance and then Brother Ryan's going to pray for us and he is the senior pastor at Baxter and Smyrna, also associate pastor here at Hamilton, not a methodist. So, brother, I'm pleased to have you here and we thank you for coming. But first of all, let's do our pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask Greg if he would.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you tonight. Lord, we just ask that your Holy Spirit come into this place, Lord, and empower us all to make decisions that are your will, not our will, Father. Lord, we ask that you are Lord of this place and Lord of this city, Father. Lord, we hand ourselves over to you tonight and, Lord, we give you all the glory and the praise and the honor. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
And Ryan, we thank you for that. First on our agenda tonight is the recommendation to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Do everyone have a chance to look at those minutes? Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, team, thank you. Any discussion on those? I'm a favor, say aye. Thank you. Number two is the recommendation to approve the council's payable bills. Have y'all had an opportunity to look at those? Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, man. Any discussion on those? I'm a favor, say aye. Thank you. Number three is Northwest Alabama Arts Council and this is regarding for the Nutcracker and the speakers are Ed Manor and Jessica Turner. So, if one of y'all would like to come or both of you come and address us, we're pleased to have you here. Mr. Ed will give you the microphone or Jessica and I'll get it on here. Battery must be dead. Y'all just talking, can y'all talk loud enough?
Yes, on behalf of Northwest Alabama Arts Council, of course, we're here to ask for financial assistance to the Nutcracker ballet performance to be held in the month of December. And we would like to ask for the amount of $2,500 in our efforts should we all produce this outstanding program that we bring into Hamilton. And with me, well, first of all, the Northwest Alabama Arts Council will handle all administration and finances of this production and we're very honored to have Jessica Turner with us who will be over in the production itself. Jessica Turner is the senior to give you just a update about the performance itself.
Thank you, yes. Right now where we are with the development of production is our next big task at hand for having our tryouts or our open auditions. Will be, it's open to the public, will be hitting area schools, but also Winfield, Ewing, Hamilton, Amory, Mississippi, as well as other dance schools and artistic groups within our community. So, it's open, it's a community-wide event. We want to be able to bring all of the people that are interested in performing to this together and give them that opportunity to be a part. Auditions will be held most likely at the Hamilton High School campus in the old gym and they'll be a full day of 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So, it gives them that professional aspect, that learning opportunity would come in and to be going through audition experience. The dates of the performances are set for the second weekend in December. Thursday and Friday, we're looking at doing two performances during the day, one at 9:00 a.m. and one at 12:00 p.m. And that will be for our city schools. So, it gives our students the opportunity to come and to see this. Some of our students will never maybe ever get the opportunity to go see a production of this type or even this sort of professional production and even exposed to classical ballet and classical music. And this gives them an opportunity at a low cost to come in and to experience this. The evening performances will be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at 7:00 p.m. And of course, those are open to anyone in our surrounding area and beyond to come and support. Right now, we're excited that the location of the performance is going to be at Bevill State, which is going to be here in Hamilton. So, it gives us the opportunity to bring hundreds of people from outside of our community in, come in, be a part of this performance, support the community, support the city, and have an incredible evening in the midst of December to boost our economy even further than the city during that time.
Our total budget for this performance is, it would be presenting, is $30,000. We have until October 1st to raise $20,000. And $20,000 goes as startup costs for crops, costumes, and number of participants. We'll have probably 70, 75 cast and production people on staff. We're talking about lighting, we're talking about sound. All this got to be acquired on a one-time basis. Of course, we can use it to follow a year as we continue with this program. But we have reached out to all available agencies. I think right now we're in contact and discussion with 13 agencies about financial support from the State Arts Council to our Department of Tourism, all the way down to our state leadership layers, our banks, Walmart. And that's just some of the ones that we're working with now for financial support to reach these goals. Is any economic, well, the number of students that we plan on bringing in, well, we're estimating around 3,500 over the four performances. This is going to be students from all our counties. We go before the Board of Education to get it approved as a field trip, educational field trip for our schools, which will bring in students from all of our Marion County as well, plus our mountain performance. We expect to have over 300 of them. So, we're very excited about the opportunity, the economic impact it will have for us. This is one example. When talking about sales, sales tax and things like that with a number of people in town, heating facilities and things like that. We'll be working with the Chamber and this huge promotion for Saturday, December the 14th for special Nutcracker sales in combination of attendance at the Center on the Square along with the Christmas, 3:00. Christmas parade will be at 5:00. And then we will also have characters from Nutcracker in the parades, by the way. And then at 7:00, perform for the Nutcracker. So, that should be a really a boost to our economics here during that day especially. So, the, what we'd like to do is continue this, as you know, the Legends of Toyland after 30 years closed. That was a program that was at the shows, Phil Campbell Campus after 30 years. We're about basically picking up where they left off because we see what that program had been and we would, we'd like to have that on a continuous basis here in Hamilton. So, we have many goals, opportunity for our local citizens to see a live ballet, enhance their artistic, you know, experience. And that's what we hope to bring. We need some cooperation and we certainly have our challenges in front of us that can be sort of made.
So, this is basically the cause of that closing down of the fire. Would you have charged it anyway or is it sort of just picking up where that's leading off and hoping to continue this trend? And are you approaching other cities to solicit help?
The school of dance has become very popular and especially ballet. We have Hamilton, Ewing, Winfield, Fayette and Amory. And it's become very popular. So, Jessica with her talent, her experience over the years in ballet, said, I think we can do this, we can put this on with her expertise and direction and everything and seeing the past history that Phil Campbell had with this, we feel that we could recreate something like this. And it's all going to be local talent all the way from high school, from college, high school, all the way down to the dance students to be performing.
So, the reason for closing was not lack of participation or do you really know that it matters, but you don't foresee?
And we contacted them to get some ideas for this production. They advised us they'd been closed for two or three years. So, but anyway, this is a new creation for us here in Hamilton. This is progress and we would like very much to pursue it at all levels, for our city, for our county. And it also has another economic impact that will have. It'd be the quality of life of our industry looking at our area.
I think it's a great opportunity to showcase our city, the talent that we have. And being able to have it in Hamilton is a huge advantage for us. And thus, you're asking for a small portion of what you need.
Yes.
So, it's only really, you know, you're going to have a lot more donations, but you know, I'm for it and of course, it's the council's decision, but I think it's a great opportunity for us to support.
As we all know, we can apply for grant after grant after grant through all these agencies, but it does not mean you will get.
No. By the time you find out, maybe.
Accept it as a fact because we raised $20,000, that's for production and everything. Of course, they will be post-performance money come in, revenue come in from ticket sales and things like that. We've got the ticket sales down to absolute minimum. Kids, school kids, $5. We were talking about now that any of the marching bands that come to a Christmas parade, they wear the uniform, they get in for $5. Adults only get $10. It's just, we have everything in there to make it practical to attend. All right, any questions I can answer? Any other question?
Is this not what we give the Chamber for stuff like this?
Well, this is actually separate from the Chamber. It don't be Arts Council. Is that not correct, Father?
That is correct. Chamber would be taking this issue up upon itself to potentially donate. This is strictly Arts Council. But we will, Chamber, I feel like, feel certain this toward you financially in addition. This was not included in anything to do with the Chamber budget.
It wasn't included in the Chamber contract, was it?
Correct. Oh, this, this event has just developed in the past few months.
Father, are you going to be dancing?
No, absolutely not.
But it's a $30,000 budget.
Total budget. Total budget.
Total budget.
That's what we estimate because we got 65 kids up there that we have to wear costumes for, our order material, make costumes. We're cutting, we're cornering costumes here, of course. We look at what's most feasible and economic for our budget for we make, buy the material, make costumes, or buy the costumes already made. We have props, we can buy the raw materials and have people do the artistic work on it for us. We're looking at every avenue we can, you know, to make this a very positive, but yet professional experience. We cannot compromise.
I was thinking $25,000, but you said it happened.
The total period is just what we estimate. We know, we know we need 20 going into to make this happen before we get in return revenue.
And you set your deadline as October 1st?
Something the council wants to add. Tonight, you're going to wait two weeks from tonight. The entertainment, Greg, somebody have you watch the recording. These are suggestions.
Well, just for the sake of being more informed, we don't need to wait till two weeks from now and have time to discuss it and see what we can do and come back to you. That's just my thought.
That's fine.
The rest I'll.
Is that okay, Father? Okay.
I'll be available if any questions you may have in a later round, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Jessica. Thank you for it. I appreciate you doing that. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Doug, have you come? He just gave us a preview a few minutes ago in our work session, but Doug, there's several people here that spare interest and want to have to say your findings and your report. So, I'm just going to turn it over to you and Matt and let you give your presentation.
All right. Mike, how about, Matt, keep it straight on the, on the PowerPoint here. First, I appreciate the opportunity to work with Hamilton down on the, in this project and absolutely enjoyed working with the fire department. Got a good bunch of folks down there, well-educated, was the thing.
Excuse me, if any of y'all want to come forward and see the presentation, you might have been to see that TV from there, from back there. You're welcome. Come up with, if you stand against the wall, move closer, whatever you want to do.
What I was asked to do is take a look at the overall fire defenses of Hamilton and see priority one, what it would take to maintain the present classification of a vertician class four that's been in place since 2002. Second priority was to look at what it would take to extend that place for our overall classifications to all parts of the city. Right now, there's several parts of the city with, of the area that is within the city but does not have the class four applied simply because they're beyond acceptable travel distance from the fire station. Bottom line is to get a rating, it has to be within five miles of an existing fire station and within 1,000 feet of fire item or excepted water supply. To get to all that, we have to go through all of their, their process, which is the communication center is part of the review. That's 10% of the total grade. Fire department is 50% of the total grade and then the water supply system or the water system makes up the division of 40%. So, just briefly, I'll run through the communication center. All of this is controlled by the 911 board and the 911 director is fully aware of all the changes that's been made and how it affects that system over there. They're in the process of making several changes. But what they're looking at is the, the emergency reporting, that is how the public gets information to the 911 and how 911 gets it out to the fire systems. This is simply what's there right now. They have operating on the enhanced 911, wireless phase two, voice over internet CAD system. Under the old grade, none of that was recognized. It was all the old telephone lines and stuff. This just, this particular type of grading just went into effect July the 1st of this year. So, this is new to the 911 folks and us as well. Next slide. All right. They look at the, the overall call process and how the calls coming and what kind of mechanism that they do. Comes in over phone system, goes into a computer system and dispatched out to the fire. Part of the grade comes from that. The next part of the grade comes from telecommunications or dispatchers. They are required to be certified, not even certified at this point, to the level that they ask for. They're required to have continuing education after they get their certification and they are required to have what's called an emergency dispatch protocol. In other words, when you call, they have a set of proper calls that the dispatcher asks the caller about, specific about fire questions, you know, what's on fire, what's burning, where you at. The top two items there, they're aware of that need, they have already set up the classes to the Alabama Fire College to get those communicators certified. I believe October is a scheduled class, so after October, that will be taken care of. The continued education goes right on through, as I said, continued with the Fire College type information. They are working on that. Next thing is dispatch circuit, simply is, is the way that the call goes from the dispatch center out to the fire forces. Everything in that system must be monitored for integrity, which tells the operators or the telecommunications when something's wrong with the system. If you lose power to a radio, they ought to know that the power's out. Right now, that system is not in place. For full credit, it has to be monitored. They have issued an invitation to bid to several contractors to get this information or get this facilities installed. It has to be put in at their center as well as any repeater site around the county because all the counties using that same center. All the departments in the county gets the same credit as Hamilton will and that is updated. So, another big point is the emergency power. When power goes off to the center or any remote site, they are supposed to get an alarm down there to tell them when the generator starts. That's not in place yet, but they're. Next item, we get into the fire department. I'm just going to hit the high spots on it. I know we landed on time, but Hamilton's required to have at least three fire engines. We have those in service right now. You've got an old tanker that's several years old. As that's replaced, it should be replaced with what's called a pump or tanker. We'll get in a technology or technical term for all of it, but later on. I will leave a copy of my report with the fire chief and I'll come to him later. The equipment's got to be 100%. There's an inventory list that the chief has got and all his trucks have to have certain pieces of equipment on it. Most everything's there right now. There's a few little pieces here and there that he's going to take care of. Document the first alarm response of two engines to a structural fire. And that's where we got a problem is the standard measurement of response from the grading people and from the NFPA standards is two engines, two fire trucks to a structural fire. They find that out by looking at your fire reports. The fire reports that I looked at showed about 50% of the fires had those two engines there. That's simply the method of operation. A lot of that is alarm somewhere. We'll send one engine down to check it out and see how things are and it's a big fire we're caught. They don't, they don't graduate like a grade or what leaves the station and the alarm goes off first alarm, next time.
Doug, let me ask you something. You said when they grade you like that, are they grading, say it is a fire alarm, but it's, are we supposed to send two trucks to a fire alarm? If we've, let's say we've had five calls of that one business or industry that goes off, fire alarm just goes off. Most, every one of them's been no fire. We're still supposed to send two trucks?
The, the way the code reads it, it is a, it is a structural fire, you send the two engines and the latter truck to it. In a case like that, what I'd do is document, I'd send what I was supposed to do the first time and then document what's taken place and why you didn't get the other, sent the other down there. Come in and officer on scene canceled everything else or something like that. It's perfectly legitimate for, to get there and say, I don't need anything, turn it around, you know. But the grade comes from what shows up on the fire reports that were dispatched, that is leaving station when the, when the alarm goes off, two engines and a ladder truck. So, I looked at your fire reports and that's a matter of changing the method of operation. It's not a money issue, it's just to change the way you operate. Next thing is pump capacity. They look at the entire city, set of basic flows. You're, all your pumpers must be able to pump that flow. You can do that right now. The issue is you've got, they can never go more than 3,500 GPM. That's what your radio's set for right now. You have that pump capacity and as long as you make that pump test for those trucks, then you get that capacity. Right now, you don't have all the pump tests you need. All right, next slide. Ladder truck, I can maintain your all the full equipment on the ladder truck. That's mostly the equipment there. A few, again, a few minor things that we're not too concerned with, but they can pick up as, as we need to. Ladder has to be tested every year. You do have that test for the last three years. It has to be documented that the ladder responded to structural fires, at least responded on first alarm. Right now, about 25% of your fires get that. What that would do is you would get 25% credit for a ladder response in a structural fire. That can be a method of operation change as well. Go back and look at it and show what actually was dispatched en route, what your operating procedure said you're supposed to see. All right. Personnel, this is a, is a weak point. What we're looking for is, is a number of firefighters sufficient to handle three vehicles that's supposed to be there and making a, a structure attack. You need two engines and a ladder truck and enough people to handle the vehicle. At least for the purposes of this report, we recommended 14, 14 firefighters on the scene. Right now, the average based on your fire reports, it is 4.6 people to have a structural fire, plus the one full-time person that's unused. That's not as bad as it sounds. It's a matter of the way they, they were watching recording. Some of the people, some of the volunteers who were actually en route to the fire did get captured in that castle. So, that can, again, is paperwork. What I tried to do is just take a snapshot of, of this man and he walked in and looked at it, that's what he, he'd see the same thing I did. So, we got a chance to tweak that up a little bit, correct a lot of the bookkeeping and paperwork issues and then change some policies and procedures before we get to, you know, to spending money. Right now, station location is a big item. The emphasis on that changed in this new grade to put a lot more focus, not a lot more points on the fire station location. Roughly 22% of the whole city, of the whole coverage area is within acceptable distance, travel distance of a fire engine. That is a mile and a half. That's what your grade gone. Fire trucks, by these standards, should not travel more than a mile and a half to the emergency. You got a little further than that in some cases. The areas in the city limits, it's beyond five miles. Five mile, five room miles from a fire station is the maximum distance that the grading or the classification will apply. You got many areas that's inside the city that's beyond that five miles, so class 10 is what they would have until a station's put in a location that would bring that area within five miles, if that makes sense. I've got a mouthful up in just a minute to hopefully show that. Even if the area is within five miles of a new station, but does not have a recognized water source, water system, then it will still be only a class 9. To get a water source, you either put fire hydrants in, you use a recognized dry hydrant system or what's called a water shop using tankers to move water. We're not getting into all the details of how that works. If any questions, we'll, we'll go into it after meeting or anytime you like to. But that's simply a process of making portable hydrant tubs, tankers, basically what we say. All right, next one. Back up there just a minute. All right. The, what, what we're looking at is the areas out on 278 East, there's areas out there beyond five miles and all the way to bring them into the station. What I was looking at, the best likely location for a station would be somewhere in the neighborhood of Haven Lane, I believe it is, and somewhere along in that area. Doesn't have to be the exact location, within a half mile either direction to work, work time. Revitalizing the old Weston Station over on the west side would be as simple as moving the engine in the existing building and take in the areas out that way and down toward the interstate. And as things develop on 43 South, the station down near Jackson Lane would pull all that area into a, the five mile distance.
Doug, I touched on that just a second, since you're on the stations possibly east of town and south. Tell us what's involved in that. Does it have to be manned? Does it have to be manned? Just tell us what kind of building you need or equipment, so they'll know. I already know, but others may not know.
It does not have to be manned, just like your station downtown is not manned. It has to be equipped with at least a fire engine. It has to be, let's say, warm and dry. It has to be a secured building and protected from the elements, and, no, it doesn't have to be manned.
And we get credit for having that station, let's say, east of town.
Yes, you get credit.
From that point, from the station out, is that correct?
You get credit from that station out up to five additional miles from there. So it would, that station would bring everything in the city limits out to seventy-eight within this five mile response area. So the next grading could be applied to that area, where it was cut off at five miles from the existing station. So, yeah, to a good point, it does not have to be manned. It would require people to go check the engines and check the buildings and make some.
And those have to be checked daily?
Yes.
Equipment has to be checked daily?
Yes. It'd be additional work for the guys that's there, but it would be a benefit to you in bringing in the folks out there. The station area won't get as great a points as it would some other area, but it is the best location to bring that five mile, bring that part of the city limits to the five miles. All right, now, thank you. Training, without getting into a whole lot of kind of details, that's a all-night sermon in itself, so just simply, they're doing a lot of training, got a lot of well-trained folks, certified people, and we're not capturing all the training in documents that will allow these guys to give them the best grade for. So the chief and I are working on some, and Matt's working on some training schedules and training forms and stuff to help us get credit for everything they're doing, as well as develop a couple of new programs. Basically, they need a training center. Training center is a drill tower in a barn building on a two acre site, and you need proof that they're using that. All right, our officers should be trained, certified, at pre-fire plans for non-residential buildings. Next slide. Here's a, here's a new category that was not added today, not available the last time we had a rating. It's called operation considerations. It's two-point value. It takes ten points to change a classification. This right here is worth two points. Does it cost anything? Develop standard operating procedures. We already got several procedures in place. In fact, they've already got a mechanism in place to develop that. And implement incident management. They're trained in the NIM system, National Incident Management System, so we could qualify for that with just some paperwork. We could qualify for the points there in operating procedures with updated paperwork. This is also a new category that is a, deserves a lot of attention. In addition to all this stuff we talked about with the fire departments and water, this is basically a bonus point. If you have it, good. If you don't, you get the credit for the standard fire operations. Community risk reduction, basically a fire prevention program. How well, how many codes are in place? Fire prevention program involves the building code, adopting building and fire and life safety codes, and keeping a current code enforced. It involves having the fire department personnel involved in building plan review. A new plant starts or new commercial building starts, the fire department should be aware of that and have an opportunity to review the plan. Before the building is occupied, the fire department would be involved with the building department on certificate of occupancy. These are bonus points, so if you're doing it, great. If you're not, you miss an opportunity to get superior valuable points. Again, it takes ten points to change classes. This whole thing right here is worth five points, so it's a half a class if you do all of that. It's tough to do all of it.
Doug, how many points does it take to keep a four?
You have to have sixty points out of a hundred, and.
To maintain a four?
Yeah, at least sixty points. I don't think you're there right now, but I think we can pull back to the, a lot of work. Again, gotten building codes, fire codes, life safety codes. They require you to have that in place, and of course, that's the council's, what kind of codes you want to put in place, but you do get points for it. Inspections of all your non-residential buildings, you get points there. If you're fire inspectors or certified, we've got some certified fire inspectors, some just got two, taking a test for it. All right, next slide, please. Investigate all the fires, and doing most of that anyway. Public education is, if you got a certified teacher, public educator, goes to school, does drills, things like that. All we do is capture some of the stuff that's already being done, and you get some bonus points for it. I would pay very close attention to that right there, and we'll work on in the future of getting as much credit out of that, you know? Water supply, we need a map that's for this scale, shows all of fire hydrants and response districts and all that. We've got that available through the GIS consortium at nine-one-one, and I think Hamilton's a part of, they can provide us any kind of maps. The, I've got a copy of one that they did for us in this. Excellent, excellent system. All right, we can consider water shows for those areas that we don't have water in, dry hydrants, and I'll be glad to, anybody that's interested in dry hydrants, use that to be individual property on and put that in. I'll be glad to provide all the information they need on the certification process. Okay, next one. This is a big item that, the fire, the inspection of fire hydrants and maintenance of the fire hydrants is a very strong point, ten points available for making sure the hydrants are in good operating condition, and that the fire department knows what the water supply is out there on each one of them. Right now, that's not available. That's not been done in the last few years. They look at the last three years of maintenance records and testing records. I didn't see anything in the last three years that qualifies on that, so I'm gonna lose some pretty hefty points there. That can be regained simply by getting back in the testing system. Either the water department or the fire department, all both work together on testing fire hydrants according to standards. They did change, one of the, one of the big issues over the years has been to have to go out twice a year and do these tests and flow that much water. They put a burden on the water departments, muddying up the water and that kind of thing. They moved that requirement to every five years. As long as they do the test once a year, maintenance and verification of the hydrants in working condition, once a year, and then do a complete flow test every five, then that will be, that is not being done out there. Thank you. That's just some information they'll need to get. We need to make sure that once they identify problems with the hydrants, they're fixed right away.
Well, we've had repetitive tests, and that's not something new, is it?
No.
That's been in effect for years, hasn't it?
It's been in effect for as long as I can remember. But what has changed is the value of it, the point value has gone up a lot, and the method of testing has changed, where they allow you to test the flows every five years instead of twice a year, and I'm not used to. That's by the American Water Works.
And you say the water department can't conduct these?
The water department can help with or do all that. Some, some areas, the water department does all of it, so they're assured that this hydrant is open and closed and maintained like they want to. They are required by the Water Works to flush the hydrants for their reasons and other than fire tips, so no reason you can't take credit for that when they flush hydrants. But a joint effort between water and fire would be, would work good there. While we're on the water supplies, again, in the two thousand and two rating, the water supply was pretty strong. It had pretty strong water points, and I didn't see a great deal of change. We did flood test in June. It was equal to or just a little better in some areas than it was in two thousand and two, so the water's not changed very, very much. There's about three sites over the city that has been defective, defective's not a good word for it, but insufficient flows for the buildings that they grade. That's been, I know since two thousand and two, the same three sites have been a little bit love, and I've got that pointed out in the report if you will. This is a map. I know it looks like a spider web, and what we're trying to show is the orange area is your present five miles. You can see a light yellow out to the right there, which is the area that's inside the city limits, but beyond five miles. The little dots are where fire hydrants are, by the way. Now zoom in on the city limits that's outside the five miles. You can see there, if you, if the station, right there at the end of the pink is where station two is the recommendation, recommended there to that. Station, the second station is put there, then the green area would be its mile and a half run. The orange area is where your present five miles ends.
The orange area is within five miles?
The orange area is the present five miles of your existing station. If the station is put right there at the end of the pink, at Haven Lane, it would project another five miles from there. So that would bring everybody in the city into that eight, five mile boundary. I know that is somewhat confusing, but.
Somebody tap before Haven Lane's there.
Just beyond the industrial park, east of town.
Here, county. About there, about the old oil well. Low Water, Low Water, Haven, right in there.
Right there around, around the funeral home, right in there somewhere?
Yeah. Anywhere below, but between Low Water, Haven Lane into the industrial park, all that's gonna be about the same point value out there, anywhere in that area, it could be a good location. I just picked that because that area is exactly three miles from your downtown station. Mile and a half in each direction, three miles to the station. Now, the, the big limiting factor is if a station goes there at Haven Lane or in that area, you do extend that area out there in the yellow into the gradable area, but you can see there's very few fire hydrants there. So the best they would do with a new station would be a class nine until water is available to that, within a thousand feet of the structure being insured. That, now, that, that makes sense, or question, any more any questions on that over there? That's, to build a station, we bring it in, but to get full value of your, of the station in water.
Bringing the station doesn't make it a four out there.
That's correct. If it, if a station goes there and water's put in, the next rating, if they do, would extend that out there. If you go to the Weston Station, that would carry you five miles all the way out to the interstate and beyond a little bit there. It would pick up some points in your distribution study. If you drop down south, you go down forty-three, you've got a long area down there, you wouldn't, you would get a majority of that within the five miles. Cashin Lane is right there at, what is that road that goes to the?
Coney Island, thirty.
Okay, thirty-five. That, that would be my third priority if I was working on something. I'd put that out, as, as that develops a little more down in there, then that'd be a good location for a station. Priority one would be, the simplest moving station would be the Weston Station, put an engine there. Put an engine out on two seventy-eight to bring folks out there into the foster class. One of the things that can be done in that area, as I pointed out, the number of fire hydrants, a fire hydrant would be a field point for your tanker system. So if you decide to put a tanker system or shuttle system in operation, the more hydrants around, of course, the shorter travel distance you'd have to drive the tankers and the more water supply you get. Alternative water is available there, putting in standard fire hydrants is available, combined with all that. I know that is quick and a lot to be covered in a short period of time. Any questions?
Touch on the shuttle, water shuttle? The tanker water shuttle, if you didn't have a hydrant in your area, but you did have, or we did have a capability of having water shuttle, would that take place of a hydrant?
Yes. What, what water, you have to qualify, any water system has to be a minimum two hundred fifty gallon a minute for two hours to be a credible water system. If you developed a water shuttle that would move two hundred fifty gallon a minute for two hours, then it would get the same grade as a, as a fire hydrant in that area. Every structure within your coverage area would get the same grade as a fire hydrant. It'd be graded on a fire hydrant just for them as thousands of feet, it'd be graded on a water show if you're using that. What it simply consists of is two or three tankers and drop tanks and field points. They, they fill up at a hydrant, haul it down the road, drop it into a big tank. The engine at the fire is sitting there drafting water out of it, pumping on the fire, and the tankers just keep making a circle and dumping water. You get it within the right timeframe, and you can meet the two hundred fifty gallon a minute indefinitely, you know, once they get started.
That shuttle has to be able to hook to a hydrant, move to the fire or another tanker to move that water in a certain amount of time.
That's correct.
So if the hydrant's still too far away, you wouldn't have enough time, even though you could get the water there.
That's right. Generally, what, and some of the water cells I've had set up is, if you have a field point within a mile, a hydrant within a mile, and two, two thousand dollar tankers, you can meet that standard fairly comfortably. If you go in more than a mile to a field point, you need more tankers. I guess it would have to fill up at a hydrant or a credible water show and travel and drop, dump it, drop it into a drop, drop tank and get it out of there.
When you say twenty-two percent of your engine, right, twenty-two percent are carrying the credible distance of engine, you're saying that within, what, five miles is that?
What, what the grade is, is an engine should not travel more than a mile and a half. That, that's the grade point. So that's the credible distance. So right now, all engines are sitting in one station, and if you look at the entire response area, you've got a huge response area.
Yeah.
So twenty, twenty, twenty-two percent of your entire response area is within that mile and a half, which is a graded responses. The reason for a mile and a half, that's a four-minute response time is what they're shooting for. The closer the stations are, the less response time.
Well, I, I know the other two times I've sat here, we've had engine at the Weston building. Why, why don't we not have that now?
When they put that farmer's market in, we was told to bring it back down here.
So that we can saw, that's pretty quick.
Yes, sir. That's one of the things we talked about, that's, that's a policy or, or method of operation change that can be done overnight without any cost, or very little cost. It brings that area out there all the way down to the interstate and beyond, well, within the five miles, and it boosts the points because you've got a lot of the hydrated, a lot of the built-up on the area out there now that's within that mile and a half, it wasn't. So that, that's a simple move that we have to lock.
Yeah, I believe you can handle that, Jim.
That's no problem. I think what, what Doug and chief has talked about, a lot of it is, some of it's training, some of it's moving that truck.
Right back out there.
Record keeping. We can gain some points and may, maybe stay within a four, but you know, the other, this is to, is to help outside that area, which we're very interested in trying to do also. The biggest problem we have is we're spread out east to west and north to south, bigger than a lot of cities with lower population than us, and we know that, and it's hard to give everyone that's on the outskirts of the city limits the same exact protection that we have right here in downtown.
Yeah.
And I understand those that live out that way very much, but I'm just saying it's, it's difficult because we are so spread thin.
You got, you got a big.
We got a huge area, a huge area, even for the police department, you know? Much more than other cities with sixty-five hundred people. We have a lot more territory to cover.
Basically, if you look at, at what you say you're going to cover and compare it to what you got to cover here, I mean, based on that, the bigger territory you got, the more equipment you gotta have, the more stations you gotta have.
Wait, you remember Chief Lowden, when that tower, water tower was built at the industrial park, was supposed to have a. was supposed to have a building underneath, and he was gonna station, put a, put a engine there. Well, the tank, the tower got changed some way or another, but that, that would, that would help us on the east side of town if that'd come through, right? If it'd been located at the industrial park over there?
Yeah, generally, a little further industrial park will be better, but you can, you, you can make the five mile boundary out there from the industrial park. And that's, that's the key out there is, is, uh, a, a location that will bring that city limit part into a rating distance of five miles. Any other questions? Another, I know that's a lot of run through it extremely fast and...
Well, I appreciate your time. It's been well worth your efforts to get us prepared before I so. Because they will cover these, and we don't know when, but they, they're gonna come. And we, we've got plenty of time now to be implemented, so we need to try to help maintain what we have and need, you know, outside those areas.
Yeah, right, right now, that, the old road was a, a set of rating. And we'll come back and review it fifteen years after that if they weren't invited back. Now, they're trying to look at everybody right now on the used cases that has not been rated in the last ten years. And then it will be a more frequent visit in fifteen years. So you have to keep that stuff prepared at all times rather than wait a few years.
Do you see what you found that we can correct, that we could keep what we've got?
I think we can keep, we can keep the four if we get all the, everything together, get the paperwork back, change some of the methods of operations, and get the personnel credits back up. A lot of training is going on. Get it documented where we can capture all the credit we need. Get the personnel backup is, is the biggest part. And I believe that is one of the weak, weak points. There's a lot of work to be done from the hydrant testing to the pre-plans to everything else that has gotta be done by somebody, and that's usually gonna fall to the one full-time person that's on duty.
And trying to get more participation probably to go to the fire crews. Like I said, we only have one or two at the station that you can give them time, full-time.
Yeah. That response...
They're looking at how many responds to each fire and how many trucks we take to each fire, whether it's very serious or not. They look at the white truck and the other trucks on route there.
The thought process there is when the alarm goes off, you don't know if bad or not bad, if you get there and verify. And you get there and then have to call back if there's a delayed resource. So the minimum resource, they should go get a structure initially, is two engines and an electric or in some cases a service truck, which is smaller deal. But, uh, if that can't be done, then we have got, have to look for ways to build points to make up for what you lose in that method of operation, not city truck.
Chief Rod, would you like to come here and tell us what your thoughts are?
Well, I mean, it's like Doug said, we've got, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. And a lot of that was paperwork. Rebooting some procedures, bringing up to the new standard, that's, you know, that's what we're gonna be there for. Get it done. A lot of work.
And you've already started on some of that, and I know you're gonna talk about it.
Yes, we have. We have. You know, like fire codes, uh, building inspections, we've already, already have that in place, you know. So that's gonna be a big bonus right there.
That, that bonus point, that fire convention, it should not do take a lot of, because it is extra points. And it's giving you points for stuff that you, a lot of you already got in place. But the inspectors, investigators, we've upgraded for the state fire marshal in some cases, that, that does inspect. So we, we will pay a lot of attention, and I'm not through with it. I'll keep working with the department as long as they reasonably want me to, to at work doing it.
If you get this down to a, say, a four, and you don't have a fire hydrant on a thousand foot of your house, are you still gonna be covered under a four?
If it's not, if, if your structure is not within a thousand feet of a sta, of a water source, then you would be a Class Nine. If you're within five miles of the sta, of a station and within a thousand feet of a water source or fire hydrant, you'd be the Class Four. If you're beyond a thousand feet, you'd be a Class Nine.
Well, that's what I am now, because I'm, I have moved in seventeen years, and I want it to be four or to nine.
The reason is, one, one of the reasons there is in all the upgrades and the technology that they've developed, where before they may go by your house and say, buy a speedometer or a measurement or something, you're within five miles of the station, so therefore you get a four or whatever. But when they go back and do the calculations now, they simply enter your address into the computer system. It compares that to the address of the fire station and tells them you're four point nine miles from a station or five point one. If you're five point one, you're outside that coverage area. They also have the location, GIS location of fire hydrants. So they've out some computerized check where you, where your structure is in relation to the fire department and relation to a fire, uh, to a fire hydrant, which they didn't have before. It was more or less, yeah, probably is within a thousand feet or so. They can get that, they're down so specific that they know to the, almost to the foot, how far your structure is from a fire hydrant. Could Fairdale look well be that you was getting credit for a fire hydrant before. Going back and looking at the GIS, it shows that you're fifteen hundred feet or so from a hydrant. And so there, they change you. Great. Do you know what, is there a fire hydrant now?
Yeah, eleven hundred foot from my house.
They, they've got it cost enough that they, now, this water shuttle would, could help that, but, uh...
Well, if, can we get a estimate on what it would cost to put a fire hydrant in that area and, uh, community to take for it?
There's been a lot of...
We have got one for your area. It was ninety-eight thousand dollars to get six-inch lines and fire hydrants just in your, just in your two streets around your little, over there. If you're...
We would need the one at the end of the road on...
I know, but you need a six-inch line, Rodney. Can, can tell you where I've got the estimate on this. We just got back from the engineer. So there's, there's like ten or fifteen streets. I mean, no streets, that's, that has all the houses around them that's not within a thousand foot. And when insurance companies wrote the insurance years ago, we was a four, probably a four slash nine. But when they wrote it up, they just wrote it as a four, because you're within five miles. Now, insurance companies are actually seeing the distance between that house and the hydrant. Which has changed. Actually, ten years ago, you probably should have been a nine. We was four slash nine ten years ago. But everybody that wrote the insurance, most of them wrote it as a four. So it's always should have been a nine, but actually, now that they're actually checking it, now they're finding out that you're not within a thousand foot.
Yeah, and they also make, when you put your house and your cars on, in the central insurance company, which is, they shouldn't be able to do that.
Well, most insurance are doing that now, bundling everything, so...
How much would it cost to get two of the tankers?
That's what we're gonna be looking into and seeing. You know, that might be an alternative if we, because you're well within a hydrant. I mean, you're about, so the tanker could get there, fill up pretty quick, and get to your house and your neighborhood, and it can do that in most areas of the city. So that might be an option, instead of having to put six-inch lines and hydrants everywhere, which we could spend a million dollars easily. I'm not kidding, a million dollars easily. Just your neighborhood, which ninety-eight thousand dollars to get that looped with six-inch lines and two hydrants. One on one road and one on the other, so...
But if you got the tankers, that would help not just our neighborhood, but that would help a lot more than just our neighborhood.
Correct. That's right.
You're talking about putting six, six, six-inch line all the way around that loop.
Well, they would have to when you're riding.
It'd, it'd be the, the recommended way to do it.
In order to get the hydrants and get, you know, we've had engineers look at it.
If you just ran a six-inch line down there and didn't stop it, you'd have dead water sitting in the line a lot of times. Because, I mean, you're being supplied right now with the two inches. You got plenty of pressure and plenty of body. Where the six-inch, there'd be a lot of water just sitting in the line at the end of. And it would be better to loop it around where it would circulate at all times.
Yes, we're not looking for pressure. We're looking for something to help us on our insurance.
You're looking at everything that a lot of other people in the neighborhood are looking for also.
Yeah, but I know as close as way on down the road from me is Gage, and we don't have it, and that's about as big a subdivision in there as you did on down the road.
I think what he's saying about looping that, though, in the stagnant water, the two-inch, you've got a lot of flow. Would everybody use it? With the six-inch, what he's saying by doing it, well, just putting the hydrant on in, the stagnant water, you got a certain amount of water that's gonna be sitting there all the time. After a while, when you open your spicket, you're gonna have smelly water. You're gonna have stinking water because that water is not circulating. That's why they sort of have to loop it. That way it circulates, and that way you don't have smelly water when you get ready to wash your clothes. That's why they have to loop it like that. Can you not put a six-inch line down there and not hook no houses up to it? You got, you got two-inch water line to everybody's house. And if you put a six-inch water...
Where you're gonna spend the same amount of money. You know, if you run that six-inch line for nothing by hydrants.
But if you wouldn't have to run it all the way around that loop. If you go down, start it, come across and go down Oakwood Drive and stop it at his house, that's at the end of that road, and everybody would be in a thousand foot of that. So you're, you're cutting off Oakwood High, but you wouldn't have to put in that.
We're looking, my husband and I, putting a dry hydrant in our home if we can make the certification of it. If we can, will that serve the same place as a regular hydrant? So anyone in a thousand mile radius of our dry hydrant be covered under a Class Four?
That's correct. If, if, if that area first brought into the five mile limit of the station, and you put a certified dry hydrant in, that dry hydrant then would be the same as a standard fire hydrant. Anything within a thousand feet of that dry hydrant would get, be created. There are several things that goes to that certification. And I can get you all the information from an engineer to on down, that's, that can do it for you. But, uh, that, I did it, I was telling them earlier, I got a dry hydrant, I'm three miles from my closest fire hydrant. And I got a dry hydrant in a pond in my backyard, and I got a Class Five out of it.
I'm saying my husband, John, he's been, he's been doing a lot of research on, by the time we're to ask, be sure everybody in our, in our thousand mile, or thousand foot city can use it.
Once it's certified and is accepted by ISO, when they come out and do the inspection, if it's in place, got all the paperwork, they'll simply stamp it as being verified, leave it in their database as a fire hydrant. And you'll get, you and everybody within a thousand road feet will get, be created as a standard hydrant. It has to have a hard surface road to get to it. It has to have the property owner say that the fire department can use it. And the fire department has to test it, exactly, to test the other hydrants. And then the water source has to be certified by several things, or by...
About what, what is the cost for that?
Depends on who you get to put it in and all that. I think it's some, probably in the neighborhood of three to four hundred dollars for a survey, for an engineer to do the stuff, and the materials and all. I'd be afraid to give you an exact price, but probably, I put my in for under a thousand dollars. And, um, I did most of the stuff myself, but it works.
But you go get the contact information?
I'll get, I'll get you a contact. Just get your name and, and address just to Chief Fry, and I'll get the information you need. One other alternative thing is large dam corrodes. And I think, I don't think we discussed that, but you could actually land, you know, the fire department can buy five-inch, six-inch holes and lay it for several thousand feet. That's a trick, and it, it's, it's tough to do, it's tough to get credit for, but it is another alternative. We'll, we'll discuss that with them. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you all doing your work.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming. Very informative. Okay. Number five is a recommendation for immediate consideration of ordinance number two thousand thirteen dash ten for disbursement of certain alcohol revenue for the Veterans Marine County Board of Education schools located within the city limits of Hamilton. And, uh, we have the ordinance here for us. If y'all have a chance to look at the council, is everything good for immediate consideration before we go?
I have a question. I was thinking, uh, number five, it was, you said throughout various classrooms. I thought we was gonna change that to all classrooms.
I think we did. I went over that with Scott before the meeting, so... You okay with that, Scott, to change that to all classrooms?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Scott was saying another island, a small island somewhere. Thought I had marked it.
I know we changed in there, originally we had it where all the money go into the account. Then we would, at the, two times a year, take thirty percent to the schools and the city, and it's seventy percent back to the general bond. We changed that January recommendation out of work session that for budget purposes, it would be better for us, add that money to me and just split it up. So that when we receive the money from all these, we go ahead and put the seventy percent on the general bond and take the thirty percent, put it to the separate amount. We changed that then on the requirements for the piece of money put in there that it could be used for athletic or extracurricular activities. We're gonna be strictly classroom. What, I just specified that a little bit more clearly.
Is this can be stopped if you have to?
That's right.
And this can be changed or revised at the next, you know, if we do it like this, and like I say, three, four months from now, come first of the year, if we wanted, we could. But right now, we're gonna do it like this.
Please, we're just blocking each tank for once.
Yeah.
It's a question to whoever, we want to bang the bank to Brother Ken.
Okay.
Are you out there?
Okay. Does that need to be in the motion after immediate consideration?
Yeah, I could just, you know, put it in.
Or put it in the, in the ordinance?
In the ordinance.
Which one?
I mean, I can give that resolution first, and then I can do that one.
So the first thing's having the unanimous consent for the considerations, I agree. Okay, is there a motion for unanimous consent?
I'll make a motion, uh, that we go ahead and look at this tonight. But I do so hope that all the principals take into consideration the teachers, because I feel like that that's the only way that all the students and the families are going to benefit from this.
Is there a special? Okay, Tim. Is there any other discussion? I'm in favor, see I? Thank you very much. Now, is there a recommendation to approve this ordinance, two thousand thirteen dash ten?
I'm not a motion.
Okay, correct. Okay, go ahead.
Depending on, do I vote on this, or depending on the main, do I have to wait and see?
You can vote on it, because the back end of the...
Okay.
Okay, so a recommendation. Frank just made a motion.
I see.
Lee, I'll say it. Any other discussion? I'm in favor, see I? Thank you. Now, the name of bank, Tom, do you? Is there a motion to the name of bank? You know, we use two or three different warrants. You wanna have one in particular?
I'll make a motion. We use the, kind of spread it around.
Sure.
I know we got one of the peoples, and I'll make a motion. We keep this one, please.
Okay. Tim Hawkins made a recommendation, use people's trust for this account. Is there a second? Okay, good. Any other discussion?
Why, do I abstain since I can vote for First National? Do I just abstain for this? I mean, what do I do?
You want to, yeah, you vote.
Okay.
Okay. So Tim's made a motion, and Craig second? Is any other questions? I'm in favor, see I? Thank you. Number eight's a recommendation to change from September sixth of May, which would be Labor Day, uh, to Tuesday, September third. So I need a recommendation or a motion to approve that recommendation.
I'm not a motion.
I agree. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, go ahead. I'll in favor, C I. Before we go, a motion to adjourn, I need to go into executive session for just a few minutes with Scott Hunt and Tim Ry, and Tim's outside, but it's for personnel reasons, and it shouldn't take too long. Tell me your motion, go into executive session.
I'm not a motion.
Okay, Francis, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, great. I'll in favor, C I. And I wouldn't take too long.
Everybody, but that's probably.
Okay.
Amy Carter being a turn.
I had a couple now, but everybody's telling me.
Well, every.
And, and to put that back.
I don't care, you don't have to tell me. Public here, here.
Groundbreaking, conscientiousness, and this Thursday, four o'clock. What, what'd you say, the first of May? The next Monday, but Tim will be here with the public here, and I'll, I'll probably, public here, so Nathan will be here. Next Monday?
Yes, sir.
At six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Thursday at eight o'clock, or Thursday the eighth, at four o'clock, is the groundbreaking of the sixth day. Right there behind N T B.
At four o'clock?
At four o'clock Thursday.
This, this Thursday is.
We got a.
That place that we're all headed to. That place we're.
It's Thursday.
They can't say that it's.
Fifteenth.
No.
Fifteenth, all of us have by Jan two to Decogs.
Right. And they really are counting on us coming.
Who's that, most show?
Did y'all vote, did y'all vote to return to read for six years? Yeah, okay.
So is there a motion to adjourn? Sorry, took so long. I'll make it. Tam. Chris, I'll say it again.
I'll in favor, C I.